Six o'clock, I'll call the March ninth, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor J.C. McPeak of St. Paul Pentecostal Wholeness Church to provide an invocation. If you would please stay and remain standing for the pledge. Pastor?
Father God, as we come before you this evening, asking you, Father, that you would touch the hearts and the lives of each and every one that is here, praying that you would touch the men and women that sit on this board, Father, that you would touch them with wisdom and knowledge and understanding. Father, as we look unto you, we pray that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts would ever be upon you, and that you would lead this board or this county to be stronger. And Lord God, that you would ever be with them, touching them, and blessing this meeting this evening together. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is citizens' time. We don't have anybody signed up. Ms. Collins? Seeing that, we'll close citizens' time, move on to the next item, public hearing, ordinance to vacate a portion of the alleyway in Max Meadows. I'll read the notice of public hearing. In compliance with section fifteen point two dash twenty-two oh four of the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance for vacation of right of ways or streets entitled and an ordinance discontinuing and vacating a portion of a twelve-foot wide alleyway in the community of Max Meadows, Fort Chiswell, magistrate district, With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the adoption of the proposed ordinance. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March the ninth, 2021, at six P.M. in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file, and the county administrators located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, are online at www.withco.org for the public to review. Do we have any citizens signed up to speak to the ordinance? Hearing that, we'll close citizens' time on the public hearing. Mr. Bear, would you?
Mr. Chairman, this is, you know, I've been involved with the forward closing of the right of way in the Max Meadows area, this is the alleyway area. I will show you just a plan had, but this just shows you a brief sketch of where it is highlighted in yellow in that aerial photography. As you can see from the aerial photography, most of the right of way has actually been developed. I should let y'all look at that share, but.
I'm trying to find that board did in that bit.
No utilities or anything that we have in that right of way area, and no concerns about that area. I'll talk about the aerial photography, and that's what I'm doing through there. When you look at it with the aerial photography, you realize it's an undeveloped right of way. Staff's recommendation would be to approve the ordinance.
I make motion we approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman, we open the vacation of right of way policy today, the way to, um, request either you advise staff to flex the amount funded of the right of way or way of the right of way policy. As you can see, it is undeveloped and the stuff is in progress. Please come down.
Hearing that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the fees.
Have a motion to waive the fees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved, and I remembered your name, Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Make a motion to pay invoice. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any member would like to pull? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from February twenty-third, Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second, any questions or discussion or corrections? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is old business. Mr. Bear, do we have anything on their old business?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything on their old business.
Does any board member have anything on their old business? Moving on to new business, the broadband public-private partnership, and I believe Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're going to ask that you punt on this and move it back to one of our budget meetings next week. The spirit will remain the same, but under advice of council, we need to be a little more verbose, and I believe the chairman will agree that I have the capacity to do that. So I will write something that's a little more thorough, that minimizes our chances of being litigated by one of the losing candidates for this opportunity.
They might have a problem with that.
If it keeps us from being sued, no. I don't want you to say.
General, I run stands, and what they're putting together is just a guidelines for looking at internet to a PPPA for the broad partnership on this, and then also putting out the request for it to run up last night, to get approved to get that in. But council would recommend that we make sure our guidelines are very clear in the process.
This would put us in line still to apply for the Virginia VATI, the broadband infrastructure funds from the state in June, if we can get it to you next week and have your consent to move forward with advertising for a partner.
And I promise you, only attorney will tell you in a thorough manner. All right, anything else, excuse me, under new business, Mr. Bear?
Um, Mr. Sir, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir, just would let you know that your next meeting will have in front of you a draft agreement with a contractor to provide the new comprehensive plan. We'll be working on developing that agreement with the preferred contractor this week.
Does anybody else have anything on their new business? All right, moving on to board reports. Budget committee, the budget committee met on March the second, 2021, and makes the following recommendations. To amend and appropriate five thousand seven hundred and four dollars to account four four zero one dash four five seven seven zero six and two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars to account four four zero two dash four five seven seven zero six for the COVID-19 municipal utility relief grant. Coming from committee, doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
To amend and appropriate seventy-five thousand to account eight one zero seven dash four five seven zero one zero for the governor's agriculture and forest industries development fund grant for Musser Lumber.
You have anything to add on that, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, that is just, we previously have provided seventy-five thousand dollars of our own, this is providing the seventy-five thousand dollars that has come from the state to go to Musser Lumber for their original project up there.
Coming from a committee, doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, would you all also proceed with just making a motion to authorize staff to proceed with paying that once the signed agreement is received?
Entertain a motion to authorize staff to.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion with that? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 To amend and appropriate one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to account three three zero one, four three zero one seven zero, and three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to account three three zero one dash four five seven zero five five for corrections and detentions, physical year twenty-one expenses.
Mr. Bear, you want to comment on that?
Unfortunately, yes.
That's why I called on you.
As I told the committee, as in your board package, I put together just a brief spreadsheet showing we had budgeted on the, basically what I'll call New River Valley Regional Jail, we had budgeted one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We started out the year with a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a month for our jail expenditures, and last month was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in expenses. Taking a three-month average and extrapolating that out, you can see that we will exceed our corrections and detention budget in the process. And same thing on the juvenile side, that's always the unknown, you don't know, you might have an error, but we've had some individuals that have had to go to juvenile correctional facilities this year, and it's currently exceeded our budget and have estimated the expenditures for the remaining year there. So unfortunately, that's why there's a request for a total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of amendment appropriation to get us through this year.
So this one hundred and twenty thousand, that's for January and February?
The one hundred and twenty thousand is for, goes into the juvenile category to help us pay for the rest of the month, and it'll pay for, it'll help us bring us back into budget for the rest of the year on it. But if we stay at the level we're at, even a minute in appropriating the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, our total expenses will, are estimated to be up near a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the year.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 And just for information, I have gone ahead and budgeted a much higher number in our preliminary numbers for next year in the budget request, after looking at these invoices. And we also have staff reviewing all the bills to make certain that we are only getting billed for county responsible inmates and not getting billed for any state responsible inmates, so we continue to work on that.
Speaking of that, did you ever make contact with Mike Jones?
Yeah.
And I appreciate his office's willingness to go through the list and make sure we're not paying for somebody that Commonwealth Virginians I'll be paying for.
Y'all ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, to reimburse vehicle damage expenses to Whitney Richardson in the amount of four hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Mr. Bear, you want to explain that?
Yeah, Ms. Richardson, our water department have worked on the line, it rained quite a bit overnight. When she backed out, her front wheel ended up stuck in that, she had to have a tow bill to pull it out, and she had to have a front end alignment performed on the vehicle. We turned it into our insurance, and it was rejected by our insurance, but the water department director and the committee believe that the right thing to do is to reimburse Ms. Richardson for these expenses. So we request authorization to go ahead and reimburse her for these expenses.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion?
I will say that that amount should be five eighty-two. I believe the receipt didn't get included in there, got lost in the mix. I spoke to Stephen about it, and I believe it's going to go to the water department, I'm sorry, the water committee, to discuss. So I just didn't want that to come back up at the next meeting, and you all say, I thought we already did that, so that's what that'll be.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the budget committee?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to board supervisors' time, Mr. Smith?
Received a call today from a citizen that was, got some concern about some water bills that she and her family has incurred. Their water bill usually runs around a hundred or so dollars. She said it went up to two hundred, she really didn't think anything, and then it went to five hundred, and then she called and called up and talked to the water people, the water department, actually, and started looking for leaks. They did find leaks on their side, and they let us know, or the county, know that they were working on it. Then they get another bill for five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And their thought and feelings is that they need, there should be some kind of process. If you know you got leaks and you call it out and you're fixing it, there could be some relief in there for the residents. So she's looking for some support from us to see if there's anything that we can do to help them out. You're looking at, so far, you're looking at roughly eleven hundred dollars in water bills, and the next one was probably going to be high as well.
I'll, and we do have a water leak adjustment policy in place. I don't know if they've gone through the process of that or not, but if you'll give me the name and everything afterwards, I'll review with them and make certain we've got that set up.
I will. She went through the process, and I think the calculation's got to be four times what their average water use would be, which would be roughly sixty thousand gallon, and they were at fifty-six thousand gallon. So they kind of fell short of that, but I'll get you the information.
Yeah, tell me, we'll look at it.
On that one. I'll receive that later this afternoon. The other thing I got is the potholes. I did send a list, Mr. Bear and Mr. Fowler on that. Some of the potholes have been fixed, but there's still some potholes in those areas, so I'll just keep, I'll monitor that. The biggest concern for me in that email that I sent was the, not so much the erosion and the dilt on Grouse Ridge, because you kind of expect that, especially with all the rainfall that we've had coming off of that hill, there's no relief anywhere from the top of the hill down. But right in front of Mr. Horton's, the entire road is coming up. So, I mean, it's right back to the clay on that Grouse Ridge Road, which is kind of, was kind of disappointing, you know, we spent all that time and money for those residents there, and the road's coming up. So if we could stay on top of that, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Bear.
Be glad to.
And then the next thing kind of goes into what we were talking about, the money that we're spending at the regional jails. We need to get the trustees, inmates, back out doing some trash pickup. The county looks pretty rough on the roadway, especially, I can only speak for the Fort Chiswell area, but I'm sure the rest of y'all's nodding their heads, it's the same, it's pretty bad. We need to get the, if we're paying that kind of money, we need to get some support. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
It's on my list, too. Mr. Cook?
Got another call from a resident out on fifty-two complaining about not having water, wanting to know if there's any plan at all to get water out there for him. So, we were talking about the water, the water committee, and if there is any plan to get water out there.
He talked about Stone.
That fifty-two out there, right before you get seven seventeen, guy told me, bring a gallon of plastic cup and that, see if I wasn't drinking. That's all I have.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. McRoberts?
Trash. That's all I have, thank you.
Chief Deputy Foster, did you make your way up here while we?
Because I got a feeling we're going to come back to you here.
I thought you called me up and talked to another thing.
Well, I shot back her, I was hoping he'd lay hands on you, but.
Mr. Horn?
I didn't know if you wanted to do him or?
No, we'll let him sit and simmer there for a minute.
Oh, okay. Had a couple things, I got two roads, or at least two roads, Back Road and Jonas Town Road, I know both of them need scraping, they need something done to them, if you don't mind sending an email about that. I was at a Farm Bureau meeting last night, and of course, we were at the Apex Center, so there were some things brought up about the Apex Center. Some of them believe that the Apex authorities should be able to apply for the PPP loans to help finance some of that, and there was something else that Matthew Miller brought up about, he's supposed to send you an email about it, Stephen, it's some kind of money that we can get from the government to help where we haven't been able to have events down there. And the only other thing I had was the shell bank out as you're going, I think it's on Petunia Road.
Yep.
Evidently, the farmers were told that they were not allowed to get shell out of it no more, and it was our county engineer that told them that, so can you find out for me what's going on there?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, and I will find out with you on that.
All right.
There are some agricultural exemptions, obviously, for shell banks, this was, this is not where the agricultural is, so I know they've been working with, I don't know, working DMNE or DEQ or whatever it is in process.
That's what I told him, I said, it's probably some kind of a DEQ thing that they can't do it, I mean, I knew agriculture should be exempt, but like you said, I mean, I don't know that you classify that as agriculture, I mean. I think that was all I had at this time.
Mr. Terry?
I had a call about the shell bank as well, so Gene's addressed that, and I get a couple calls about the trash, and Jamie's already talked about that, so that's all I had.
I think that's a big thing, I forgot about that one.
What, the trash?
The trash, yeah.
Um, I will, not all negative, VDOT and Wendy Hill Drive, if you know where Wendy Hill Drive is, it's a dirt, one-lane road that the log trucks have been using as a shortcut to get to the sawmill in Crockett. I will say thank you to Mr. Bear and Andy from VDOT, they put a sign up, we don't know how good it's going to be, but we'll see, the residents are pretty tickled about getting the sign up, and at the speed of going, it was fairly quick, so.
Trash.
I know we've got a jail meeting Friday, and it was already on my list to bring it up when we're going to get the trustees, but even if we get the trustees, the sheriff's office doesn't have anybody, the trash guy resigned and took another job, so I can't discuss it, but.
So what are we going to do?
I mean, because the thing about, I mean, if they, if we have a jail meeting Friday, and they say, hey, you can have trustees Monday, we.
Yeah, well, that's our problem, I mean, the actual van itself up on the resignation Erickson, I went ahead and we took it up on ourselves to have that thing serviced, and it's got the sticker on it, it's over on Sixth Street, I mean, it's ready to go, but the problem is, we can get to do it.
Have you all, have you all put the application, I mean, do people know that you're hiring for it?
We've got actually four vacancies, actually, just for patrolled deputies right now, I mean, we could actually open up something, I could get Mr. Bear on it, and see how y'all want to advertise.
Yeah, I wasn't sure exactly how that works.
Yeah, I mean, it's budgeted, it's out there, it's vacant right now. The, you know, it's one of those things, you want to have somebody available to do it. If we didn't have all the vacancies, I would hope we could have somebody that could help out, you know, until we could get somebody in here. And, you know, whether the jail's putting them out five days a week or just one day a week in the process, you know, to find out what they're doing. You know, on the financial side, part of the revenue for that position came from VDOT, but we have to be out picking up the trash in order to bill it to VDOT in the process. So we could, we could go ahead and look at advertising soon, you know, we could advertise immediately to get somebody in there, but then it's, it'll be a hundred percent county funded until we do get the trustees from the jail to start picking up. But everybody knows, I mean, trash is a huge problem.
I know.
And I know this is, I know it's come up before my time, I remember hearing it, but, you know, if you load five bags in a truck, and you drive to Apple House, and you get there, and you ain't got the four bags.
You should go back and find a fifth.
You know, and I know that it's been discussed about getting people's names out and charging them for littering, and judges wouldn't predict them. Has Arlen ever tried to charge them to fail to secure a load?
Don't know, but I know we have been successful at going and finding names and going to get people to clean it up.
Because, I mean, it's, it's whole bags, and it's, you know, it's not just the west end of the county, I've seen on the east end, I've seen at Spiegel. Can you get with Arlen and have him, I mean, I know they get a lot of animal costs, and I know they're blessed to have that third personnel, but right now, we need him on trash.
Yeah, and actually, there's a lot of property maintenance issues that he's actually dealing with right now as well, on that same, the trash is very bad.
The other one I had was actually bags of trash.
Yeah. The, and, you know, one thing, not that it's an ideal situation, we was talking about the other day, after outrunning on one of the roads, is, not that it's the ideal solution, but do we want to try to do a volunteer cleanup Saturday, working with VDOT? I was thinking about it, and I actually saw another county's got something out there like that. VDOT, and I've already, I've called Andy to see if they can provide the bags and the vests, because technically, they have guidelines that people are supposed to follow, but if we could get, because we don't have the trustees right now, if we could get church groups, volunteer groups, individuals, whatever, to pick up bags and vests from VDOT and go out and pick up some of these areas, and VDOT at least go out and pick all the bags up, because they'll pick up all the orange bags. We would just probably need to work with the sheriff's office that people call in and give the locations of where it is, just like what Mr. Erickson used to do, where you all have a list of that and give that to VDOT to go out and pick those areas up. But, I mean, just anything to get some of this picked up, I mean, it's not going to solve all of it, but we need to.
So, yeah, so I guess, I guess first would be find out when we get the trustees back, and then fill that position ASAP and do what we have to in between, I mean, anything helps. I'd be more than happy to help with any of that.
Yeah, no, and I agree with Ms. Lawson. I think with the position, I think we can get it, go ahead and proceed with it now. I think residents of the county would much rather see their tax money go to cleaning the county up than some of the other items.
And don't we have, isn't basically the courtroom security officers have the same level of training as what we need for?
I think, I think.
Trash pickup? So, I mean, to me, that would also be the first thing we look at, if we've got any, any courtroom security officers that have the level of training to go out there, if they're not already working in, you know, so many hours, I think we could look at putting some of those part-time people on it, because they're not full-fledged.
Well, what's the term on?
But we're advertising.
Yeah, the problem with that is they're limited hours, and they're three or four people short there.
Already has this.
Do they have to go through some kind of academy? I mean, after?
You see, they have the responsibility, the inmates, so they have to be properly trained to do with it.
And there was a question on that, and I was talking about it before the meeting. When I worked for DOC, we had beat-up people that were certified to take, to handle firearms with work crews. Now, that's been, what, eighteen years ago, but I think we probably need to look into it, because Smith County, Smith County runs a bunch of trash crews, and they have retired people and not necessarily retired law enforcement, so I guess we need to check with the academy or DCJS and see exactly what you have to have.
I can take care of that.
How long, how long it takes from the time they get hired to when they can actually do so.
Well, the ideal situation is finding the semi-retired individuals, yeah, that can do it, so.
But, I mean, going back to what you were talking about, Mr. Bear, you know, if we scheduled. if we scheduled, you know, a community or county-wide cleanup day and get that, I mean, because there's a trailer that goes with that van, correct? I mean, that's...
And if, if we worked it through VDOT, we wouldn't even have to send it up to pick up, we could just...
Well, but even, you know, to help VDOT out, I don't mind volunteering a Saturday to come out and...
Load them up.
Load them up or whatever. As long as it's not freezing cold, because the older I get, the colder I get.
Well, if Chief Deputy will look into the, the criteria and we'll look at getting something ready to go out. It's easier to get somebody full-time, it costs you more money to get them full-time. I don't know if we can find somebody part-time, if you're having difficulty finding part-time courtroom security, it's probably going to be hard to find somebody to do it part-time in the process.
And it's, and I will say, it's, it's definitely a program that you didn't realize...
Oh, yeah.
How good it was until we come in.
I know, it's, it's really sad to see how trashed everything really is. Atkins Mill Road, I couldn't believe it when I saw it.
You were getting five to seven, I am myself five to seven calls every day.
It's bad.
Yeah, the Chapman Road, there's bags of trash just laying there on that road.
Is there a way to, just to provide to fill in the gap, like maybe having an off-duty deputy paid, looking paid a certain rate a day to do it or...
Yeah, you actually, well, if you're part-time, I don't know if you have any of your full-time guys that being arrested or not, we could find that.
Has this been evolved to?
Maybe paying those, or something to out supervise.
How much money's left to that line?
Well, it, it's, it's pretty much been his salary throughout, so I don't remember when he left, it's been, I guess within the last month, so. So I would say 60% of it's spent, most of it's his salary and benefits and that's what it was. Let me know those criteria and we'll see what we can...
I also sent Mr. Barrett an email in response to your last thing about the vehicles for the schools.
Yes, sir.
We found out we had six Taurus's, one Explorer that was operable over here on Sixth Street. Sent the email to Mr. Barrett, they ranged from about 95 to about 180 on the mileage, but they were taken, taken out the other day, they were driven, they seemed to be operable, so I just thought I'd tell them that too. And I know where Mr. Barrett's wearing it, so whatever you want to get on that.
And I, I've sent information to the school board about asking them to do the maintenance and everything on it in exchange for getting the vehicle parked out front.
I want to give you a number, y'all, you asked me researches, that's 12%. I think that would fulfill the requirements for people you got working, I'm still short a couple of those guys too, but that would fill the gap right now as far as vehicles got.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You want to say anything about the jail bill?
We do have one other vehicle, it's a 2015 Chevrolet Impala that's going to be retired here shortly, it's got about $95,000 on it and it seems to be a real good vehicle. Actually Doug Cuck's been driving the vehicle for several years. It's, it no longer serves our needs, so that vehicle will be retired too. I don't know if you've got anything, you might need something like that for it, but it's a very good vehicle.
Okay.
It's integrity on, it's good, paint's good, runs good, so.
Doug took care of it.
Doug took good care of it.
I'll give it to him, he got that Dodge.
Anything else, y'all let me know, or Mr. Barrett let me know, we'll, we'll do anything we can. Sheriff said to take it and use it for your needs if you find a place to use it.
Thank you.
And, and I mentioned it to Mr. Barrett, because I know we talked about the, that Malibu and I don't know how many miles on that thing, but it's pretty rough.
Yeah, it's not a lot of miles, but it's, it's, it, the Impala would probably work better for us than the Malibu.
We're actually transitioning that vehicle right now, so it'll probably be ready in the next few days if we have it, but I'll, I'll stay in contact with you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Anybody else have anything before we go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you add a closed session for a five prospective industry project panel.
Entertain a motion to go into closed session under 2.2-3711A3, acquisition of real property and 2.2-3711A5, project panel. So hold on a second. Have a motion, have a second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We're now on closed session. Yes, sir.
Resolution, certification of closed meeting, whereas the With County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative accord of vote and in accordance with provision of the Virginia Freedom Information Act and where as section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors as such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I make a motion with it.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything else? Ms. Collins? Anything else? Anybody else have anything? Here now, we'll be in recess until Monday, March 15th, 2021, what?
Based on the motion, attorney, have a motion to go into recess, please.
Oh, entertain a motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in recess.
We've done that for 20 years without doing that and I keep forgetting.